Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. I would first like to wish everybody a belated Happy New Years, or of course, which happened yesterday, and hope that everybody's had a happy and safe holidays. And we're glad that you're here tonight, and of course, those who might be watching via our YouTube channel, too. Turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith.
Thank you. Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would invite any who would like to participate in our invocation to stand with us, and we have asked Reverend Griff Voltaire with Kingman Presbyterian Church to give that invocation, and afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
God of all glory and Lord of all life, we come before you this afternoon in faith believing that you will grant our city councilors your insight, wisdom, and influence throughout the process of this meeting. As we begin this new year of 2024, we lift before you the elected leadership of our city of Kingman, who are invested with the authority, administrative power, and vision to develop this municipality's future. Theirs is both the privilege and the responsibility to govern this community and its people. We ask you to equip them to face the challenges and the changes necessary to benefit our citizenry. We ask for your wisdom and guidance so that they may govern with all integrity and honor, and we give you all the praise and glory for your help, your grace, and your generosity. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please say with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, awards recognition. Kingman Visitor Center selected for an official Best of America Experience in 2024.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we're excited to have with us tonight Josh Noble, our Tourism Services Manager, who's going to report on this recent award that the tourism division received. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Noble.
Thank you, Manager Miller, Mayor, members of council. We were selected by Best of America as the best Route 66 Visitor Center in the state of Arizona for 2024, so we had them come down and do a little video that will be featured down in Phoenix and Tucson in February. Before that happened, we thought we would give you, our VIP members of the community, a sneak peek at our video and our award. And this will be the banner that we'll have on our website, showing that we're the best Route 66 Visitor Center in Arizona. Annie?
the shirt you're wearing right now, right?
This means we're on to the finals.
There we go.
Hold on, sorry, it's a whole thing.
Well, Kingman Visitor Center, my name's Josh Noble, I'm Tourism Services Manager for the city of Kingman. We are located in the historic powerhouse in this electricity port area of mine, 1909 and 1948, and houses our visitor center and museum.
Hi, my name is Desiree, and I'm the Visitor Center Coordinator here for the city of Kingman Visitor Center. We welcome guests from all over the world where we give out different tourism information for things to do in and around the Kingman area, things to do all over Arizona. We offer free masks, and we also have our Visitor Center gift shop list right here, which is all predominantly USA-made and local-made items. We are open seven days a week, except on the major holidays. Also come in, get your passport stamps for when you're taking those trips on your Route 66 drive. Right upstairs, you've got our Route 66 Museum, which Nikki's gonna go ahead and give you a short tour of.
I'm Nikki, and I'm the Director of Operations for the Historic Route 66 Association of Arizona. Our Route 66 Museum tells the chronological history of Route 66. It features life-size dioramas that show up in Route 66 exhibits. Entrance to the Route 66 Museum includes entry into the world's only electric vehicle museum.
And we're in the electric vehicle museum. We have over 100 years of electric vehicle history from 1909 to the present day, and you can come check out about 36 vehicles we have on display here at Kingman.
Thanks to you at the Kingman Visitor Center at the heart of the historic Route 66. See you in Kingman!
I just wanted to add, when the videographer came, they were really impressed with how much the visitor center had to offer and thought it was more of an experience than just a visitor center. And so they really wanted to try to showcase as much as they could, and they had a hard time fitting it all in into such a short video. Without happy answering questions.
Any comments or questions for Josh? Well, Josh, congratulations again.
Thank you.
To you and your staff.
Thank you.
For helping keep and putting Kingman on the map even more so. So, thank you.
Thank you for the support.
Okay. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. First, we have Mr. Jim St. Pierre, would like to come up.
Put the cheaters on. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm here tonight to request a stop sign. It may sound silly, but I'm a resident of Walupi Foothill Estates up here, and on the corner of Delaware and Dakota, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but if you go up Walupi Mountain Road, take a left on Seneca and make a right on Dakota, that's the major cross street going through that area. There is that intersection, the east-west has a stop sign, the north-south does not. The very next intersection, which is Dakota and Pawnee, has a four-way stop. So in August, what kind of brought this to my mind, that I really wanted to bring it to the council and the city, is my neighbor was killed at that intersection. And the problem, it was his fault, 100%, so, but the problem is, when you come down to that stop sign, you're coming downhill into Delaware. Now, weed abatement, as we know, during the summer gets a little tough, and he was driving a smaller truck, and the weeds were tall, and he just never saw the car coming. And low impact, hit his head on the window, and he died. Well, I've seen a lot of close calls there, because I drive that street every day, and people come through the one on Pawnee, and it's a four-way stop, and they come down to the next stop sign, and your brain just, I don't know, it's stupid, but we assume it's another four-way stop. And you pull out, and then here you got a cross traffic. So I was just going to ask if the city would consider putting a stop sign in there, so we don't have another accident maybe like that, just slow the north-south traffic down a little bit. I would suggest, since that's been a north-south runway for so long, that you put a stop sign, at least temporarily, that has lights around it, so that it, you know, gets people so they're not running stop signs. So that's it. I just wanted to ask if maybe you guys would consider that.
Thank you for your comments, Jim, and the city staff has heard, so thank you. Mr. Walter James Ochse.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come forward?
How you doing? First, City Council meeting. Sorry, didn't come well adjusted by working.
Please step forward and speak into the mic, please.
Hi. I want to bring the world's fair here to Kingman, Arizona, to help raise the gift rate for Toys for Tots and to take the kids off the streets. I inherited a large amount of money, and I'd like to drop $4.2 million, $4,250,000 for this project on the table, out of my own pocket. I can bring corporate sponsors across the table for Bain Capital, seeing how that my mom's a senior vice president, and Mitt Romney's going to be my uncle, and Bain Capital's a family's business. If I can get the full city's support on this one, it'd be awesome. I just, I don't think that the box is really working, and if we was to make this, if, I think that there's enough money with corporate sponsors and then out-of-pocket that we'll be able to do what it was intended for, and like, to ride a ride, it's gonna cost you a gift. And that's really what we're after, is better gifts for the children for Christmas. And then also, a couple of local MCs have brought to my attention, they would like the kids off the streets. So maybe we can refurbish some of these old houses with this project, put a plan together. I'm not really good with this kind of thing, but I do have the money.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, how do you want me, do you want me to write?
We will, our city manager has heard, and he will probably be in touch with you.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Councilors, do you have any items that want to be, you need to be pulled and discussed? Okay.
Aye.
Oh, Councilor Ward.
M and N.
M and N?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, real good. Then can we have a motion approving items A through L, and then O and P on our consent agenda? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Annie opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilor Ward, item M.
I just had a couple of questions. M was the street sweeper purchase.
Can I interrupt real fast? I'm sorry. Could we just read what?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Item M.
You did say M and N.
Mike and November.
Yes, okay, so let's take care of M first, we'll just say in order. Item M on our consent agenda, traffic signal vehicle detection equipment. This agenda item.
Go ahead.
Is for consideration and approval to purchase vehicle detection equipment in the amount of $147,938.10 for multiple signalized intersections. The equipment will provide bicycle detection and better functionality for the intersection. This equipment is for vehicle detection only. They are incapable of or intended for law enforcement, such as red light enforcement. This is part of an ongoing project to update signalized intersections throughout the network. This purchase will utilize the Maricopa County Cooperative Contract 2001-25-C. Staff recommends approval. Okay, Mr. Ward.
First, I had a comment, and then I'll have a question. The comment was, I've never read a contract that had that many strike throughs, line outs, and price changes. I've never seen anything like it. What, what gives?
So the, the contract is a renewal typically, and we have some that go the same, but you don't see as much change through them. But the contract goes out, and at the end of one-year period, the entity and the contractor will negotiate that again. There might be changes to it, and then it comes back with those and gets adopted again. So if you look toward the back, I think this is on the third revision, and each one of those revisions is in that, that contract packet as well.
Yeah, I looked through it. The question I had, Jack, was you made a point to say that it, there's red light, the cameras couldn't be used for red light runner, but on page 17, item 38, there is a reference to including red light runner reports. What is that?
So it's, it's actually different equipment. A red light system is a separate, if you've ever driven through them, you've seen a camera system off the side of the road. That's not what these are. What we're using them for, most of our intersections have inductive loops in the ground, so we have wire that when a car pulls over it or a vehicle, it registers, tells the cabinet, hey, I got somebody sitting on this phase. And we have some loops that are broke, some that have gone bad, and so rather than cutting the asphalt and replacing those, it also makes it easier when we come and we do milling fills, namely railroad is one of those intersections we're replacing already. And so, again, this, this equipment just detects if there's a vehicle sitting there. What's nice with the cameras versus the inductive loops is they do have vehicle, or I'm sorry, bicycle detection. So the roads that we're adding bike lanes to, like Walupi and Stockton Hill, Andy Devine, we've been trying to go back and, and change out from loops to cameras in those intersections. And that way, that's where the better functionality comes in for bicycles, but also we can do advanced detection loops or detection boxes, because they're no longer loops, but we can actually get better functionality out of the, the equipment in the cabinet by using these detection cameras.
Okay, so no way it can be used for traffic, red light?
Yeah, it's separate, separate equipment. So if you've ever gone through an intersection, you'll see separate cameras and stuff setting off to the side. It's, it's a whole different system.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions, since Mr. Ward brought that up? Okay. Mr. Ward, you want to make a motion for approving item M on our consent agenda, traffic signal vehicle detection equipment?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Annie opposed? Item M carries. Item N, street sweeper purchase authorization. This agenda item is for consideration and approval to purchase a new street sweeper. The sweepers are used for the general sweeping program. They are also used for pavement preservation and storm cleanup. Kingman is a registered end-user of the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. The attached proposal from Schwartz Industries in the amount of $393,346.80 will utilize a Sourcewell Cooperative Contract 093021-SWZ. Staff recommends approval. Councilor Ward.
Yeah, my question, is that one of the two that we approved during the budget process?
Correct.
Or is that a second?
It is.
And, and the prices increased that much between when we approved it and when we ordered it?
So what we've, what we've been struggling with, because this was actually approved last year, we reach out to a vendor and we get a quote, and it says, you know, okay, here's the quote, price subject to change. We can't accept those. We're looking for a solid quote. Chassis have been the problem. Trying to get a chassis from anywhere is problematic, as you've seen with the trash trucks in general. So this one, I was able to get a solid quote on a chassis with a dedicated timeline, and that's why the chassis have gone up significantly. Different item, but when we ordered the trash trucks a couple of months ago, there was about $130,000 increase from when we ordered the last set, so the chassis are the, the holdup in that, and that's why it is more.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilor Ward? That's it?
No.
Any other councilors have a question to go along with that? Okay, Councilor Ward, would you like to make a motion approving item N, street sweeper purchase authorization?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Annie opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, old business, we have none. Item number five, new business, A Residential District 3 Crack Seal. This item is for consideration and approval of a proposal from Sunland Asphalt in the amount of $1,098,882.39 for crack sealing services for Residential District 3. City crews are scheduled to crack, I would imagine, crack seal Residential District 2 once a new crack seal machine arrives. Crack sealing will be one step in preparing Residential District 3 for chip sealing in the next fiscal year. This work will be completed utilizing the Buckeye Cooperative Contract 2019005-04. Staff recommends approval. Jack?
Thank you for the lengthy introduction on that. So as it says, we are actually scheduled in-house to do the crack seal work for Residential 2. I was hoping to be here to tell you tonight that that had already started. Our machine showed up and went home the same day for warranty issues, and so it is due back here tomorrow morning, and we'll get everything set up, and then we'll be underway in Residential District 2. Residential 2 was also anticipated to be chip sealed this fiscal year. Mojave County can't get to that until after the fiscal year, and then we had looked at using some contractors, they're actually starting another chip seal crew, so we were wanting to do this work into early next fiscal year, probably in the summer, fall, like we did at the last project. And then what that'll allow us to do is the funds that we had encumbered, because we'd brought a contract, actually two contracts to you guys in the past, one for chip seal aggregate and one for emulsion, is we'd reduce those POs by the amount, the $1,098,000, use that money to get Residential 3 prepped or crack sealed, and then we would come in and do both those districts as a combination between Mojave County and contract work. And so that's what that agenda item is for.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Plante about this?
I do.
Mr. Ward.
What, if the county, this isn't the first time that they haven't done what they said they were, why do we continue to partner with the county when they're unreliable as far as getting the job done?
So I, I don't, you know, last year, they couldn't complete everything, but it was anticipated with Mojave County that they would be doing summertime, maybe after July. I actually called, you know, part of the coordination process, and talked to them about the, you know, what they're thinking their schedule would be. They have a heavy chip seal plan this year, and we're anticipating that being after the fiscal July 1, whether that's, you know, two days a week, they're working out their, their program right now. A big part of the county was supposed to be the cost of it, when you look at contract versus county, which I'll be coming back to you guys, next meeting agenda, I'll have an item that we need to get approved that's related to the county, and at that point, I'll have some numbers for you to compare, you know, county versus contract, and then there were some questions about in-house chip seal as well. So we'd given some numbers in the last budget year, and so going through and dusting those off and making sure everything's up to date and bringing that back. But at this point, it's not a matter that the county has left us hanging. You know, we knew there would be float, sorry, I mean, whack the, the microphone, there could be float if they come out of their chip seal early in the fiscal year, or I'm sorry, you know, late in the current fiscal year, they might take on that work, but it could be into the next. So we're just moving work from one side of the fiscal line to the other to make sure that we utilize all those funds that we have.
I just don't understand why we continue to work with somebody that doesn't do what they say they'll do, and that's the county. I, I understand it's a money thing, but if, if they tell you, we're gonna do 30 miles, they should do 30 miles. If they're not going to, we need to look at contractors. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and, and the, the work that's coming to do two, two districts, the county has told us it'd be about 25 miles that they could do a year, and so last year, they, they did less than that, you know, whatever they're, they're doing this on top of their own program, so not saying we don't look elsewhere or do other things, I'm, I'm, you know, that's part of what we're breaking down in the, the post-program analysis that we're gonna do. But the, you know, the upcoming fiscal year, I, I just want to make it a point that it's not that they told us they would do it in, you know, June, and now they're not going to. They haven't told us they're not gonna do it at all, it's just, hey, we know we have a heavy program coming up, and we wouldn't be able to get to that until after that July mark. So definitely something that we're going to be evaluating all the time. Timing, cost, all those things weigh in, you know, the, it's something we're gonna look at, I guess, I just really want to make sure that, that it's not a matter, at least in this circumstance, that the county has left us hanging. We're just, we're shuffling around to work between us and them.
But we're delaying.
I'm sorry, say again?
But we're delaying from what our original.
Understood.
You put out a, a sheet earlier in the year.
I did.
When we were gonna be doing what? And, and we're not gonna meet those goals, right?
Not by the end of the fiscal year, no.
So Mayor and council, this has come up a few occasions, and in the past, we have not, as you know, expended the full amount that we have dedicated for the streets or for pavement management. And so I've been trying to work with the staff so we have a better handle on trying to expend what's allocated each year, because that's the one thing that, that we've been kind of criticized for is not spending the allocated, the allocation. And I've heard from a number of councilmembers on this topic, so I'm working with the staff to figure out how we can do that and make sure that we stay on, on project, because there seems to be an issue with building expectations up and then not delivering, and that's very important, particularly in the trust of the community on what we say and we follow up on what we say we're gonna do. So I just want to let you know, I've talked to the staff, we're gonna continue to work on trying to deliver and trying to keep these, I don't want to say promises, but the deliverables as explained to people in the past. So I do apologize, but I think when we can work with the county, it seems like the county, the, the costs are very reasonable, but as we've been seeing over the last couple of years, they, we're not always able to get the timing that we'd like, and that causes issues with our project schedule, and not spending the money that we have allocated. So we're gonna work on that. So appreciate it being raised tonight.
Thank you, Manager Miller. So to, to Manager Miller's point, so the, the amount that's on that proposal, would it, would allocate or encumber all the funds that we haven't used to date, so by the end of the fiscal year, we want to make sure that there's nothing left in there. So that's what this does. Yes, it does delay the work, you know, it could be, could be a couple of weeks, a couple of months, but that sets us up to do Residential District 3, maybe even earlier than we had anticipated.
Well, first of all, I commend you on what you've done this year. At least there's a lot of movement on the city streets, and it's a good thing. Sometimes I'm not real proud of the job we've done, but it's, it's better than nothing that'll hold the streets together until we can do better. But I have one other question, Jack. Sunland, why, why is that the only contractor that we seem to use? I was just curious.
So this contract in particular says it's a Buckeye contract, which we did use. They are one of our job order contractors, and that is for our street and sidewalk maintenance, street and drainage maintenance, rather, job order contracts. They're one of the few contractors, there are other in the state, but our job order contracts that we have set up with them, they're the only one that provides chip seal services. So there are other, actually even crack seal, which is what the, the proposal is for. There are other contractors out there, I'm sure we can go find, but we have contracts with them. The reason we use the Buckeye this time, as you guys will probably see on the next meeting, renewing the job order contracts with all, I think there's five job order contractors that we have for street and drainage maintenance.
Okay, I was just curious.
Okay, Councilor Ward, we're good? Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Walker?
Yeah. In your past, we self-performed chips that our equipment has outdated. I know we purchased and we okay approved their purchase of crack seal equipment. Did we ever get a quote on a chip box?
Councilmember Walker, can you please turn your microphone on?
Sorry about that. I'm asking if we have a quote on a chip box.
So we did, we did get a quote, because during the budget, the scenarios we brought to you included the capital. So we did. We did get a quote because during the budget, the scenarios we brought to you included the capital purchases if we were gonna do an in-house chip seal program.
Yeah, 'cause I, my personal feeling is, long-term, I think we need to be self-performing. You know, the county, we've kind of seen that, you know, they're gonna help us out when they can. But with the financial difficulty they're seeing right now, how much longer are the other supervisors gonna, you know, is district, one of the other districts gonna say, why are we helping Kingman so much? So I think we need to be prepared to self-perform in the future.
So we did, we did a breakdown for in-house chip program and what the anticipated cost per square yard would be. And so that's part of what I'm trying to dust off to bring back. Whether it's a, an agenda item as a staff report or during budget, I know we're gonna have the conversation. The big consideration in that was, last time, when you look at the number of people, I think the county, not including the people that we had covering up manholes and taking care of traffic control, it was like twenty-two people on their chip program. And so the long-term was the cost of just the salaries to maintain that program. The capital was very small in that, and it's not a one-and-done cost. But you buy, you know, a million dollars' worth of equipment, and it lasts you eight, ten years versus the ongoing cost for the manpower, labor. And so that's something that I'm refreshing and give you guys an opportunity to review as well.
Thank you, Councilor Walker. Any other questions for Jack? Yes, Councilor Sayley?
So in terms of money, I know you're saying that you're gonna spend the entire budget, but that work won't be completed. I'm curious if you can tell me how much for the year we will have spent and completed? Not the extra that you're spending, but will get pushed off into the next fiscal year?
No, we will complete that work this year.
So?
The money we have allocated that we're encumbering, we will spend, we will complete that work by the end of the fiscal year.
And that's like twelve million dollars, somewhere around twelve million?
Ten, we had eleven and a half, but by the time some Andy Devine was done, a portion of it rolled over. So ten and some change. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
So you anticipate that we will have completed over ten million dollars' worth of street improvements in this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, on that same note, I've shared with a councilmember who was asking about some activity on the part of Public Works as it relates to streets. And we're gonna start doing every other month a department report just on streets. Because there's a lot of interest, obviously, in the, in the community about streets. And so we're gonna do this every other month before you so that the public's aware of what they can expect, what has just been completed, and then the two-month look ahead for streets as well on pavement management.
Thank you, Manager Miller. Any other questions from council? Yes, Councilor Ward?
Jack, the other street equipment that we approved during the budget, have we ordered that?
So I have one outstanding piece right now, I'm sorry, two. I just got a quote back for a patch truck was one of the items. Again, trying to get chassis was the, the big, big push on that. And so I have two different quotes. We're reviewing two different pieces of equipment. The anticipation is that you'll see that on the next agenda item. The last piece was a spray patcher. I don't have quotes on that yet. We've actually been working at it for a while. Not had a lot of luck getting, getting, getting proposals back for that, so. But the sweeper, the patch truck will be next one, and then the spray patcher will be shortly after that.
So we have, we have sent the biz out. We just haven't gotten them back. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so we, we've been reaching out using the cooperative purchasing contracts that are out there. And like I say, the problem that we're running into is chassis. They'll give us a quote, and then in the fine print says, you know, price subject to change. And I've been trying to get Tina to give me a blank check for a while, and she just won't bite off on that.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
Yeah, yeah, it, I think that's been us before. And so, like I say, you did the sweeper on the consent tonight, and then the patch truck will hopefully be on the next one. I do have two solid quotes from two different vendors for, for those for next, next meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I'm just curious, are you fully staffed in that department?
We're missing two. So there's two sides to that, 'cause one of, one of the things that you guys approved in the budget was a four-person crew that predominantly does pavement preservation. And that crew, I believe we have one gone from there and one gone on the general maintenance side. So compared to what we have been, much better, but it just seems to be an ongoing hire-and-replace scenario at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Plante? Can we have a motion then for item 5A under new business, residential district three crack seal?
I'll motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Item number six, department reports, we have none. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I just have one, Mayor and Council, and that is for the public primarily. And that is to remind the public that the city offices will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth in observance of Martin Luther King Day. So that will obviously cause impact on those that have solid waste pickups. And everybody knows what the drill is on that and how that works. But I just wanted to let you know that since this is the last meeting before we have our next council meeting, and the holiday will fall just before that day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Mr. Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Ward?
Nothing tonight.
Councilor Sayley? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Nothing for me, thank you.
I would like to bring attention to one thing, item number seven, an announcement by us. We had a good friend before the holidays, their family. Their daughter was killed in a accident, red light. A person ran a red light and broadsided her and killed her. I would just bring attention to everybody and encourage everybody to pause when you're intersections, look around, be safe. It was a tragic accident, nineteen-year-old daughter, and very sad. And we just need to, you know, life is fragile. We all need to remember that. And be always aware of your circumstances, your surroundings, and what's happening, especially as we drive through our great city. And of course, once again, because of the holidays, we see all the good that comes out. And I can always, and I always want to praise those peoples who helped support all the positive efforts of moving our community forward and serving their fellow men. I can't say thanks enough, and I just want to always mention that at our meetings. Item number eight, council request for future reports and updates. Anybody from council have anything? Okay. Item number nine, executive session, 9A, Kingman Crossing and Rancho Santa Fe Interchange Discussion. Staff wishes to discuss the Kingman Crossing and Rancho Santa Fe Interchanges. Staff requests that the council go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4. Can we have a motion for us to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going into executive session. Once again, thanks all of you for being here tonight. Be careful going home, and have a good evening.
Okay.
Thanks, Clerk Meredith. We are back from executive session and the staff has enlightened us as to some of the issues, some of the things with Kingman Crossing Orange to Santa Fe and we are all up to date. So without any other discussion, we are adjourned.